Very much Dan Scott. So this is the March 10th, 2021 meeting of the City of Edina Planning Commission. Hope everyone's enjoying. Been able to enjoy this better weather the last few weeks. Tonight's meeting, we have one public hearing and we have three presentations also to discuss as well as regular chair member comments staff comments. To everyone who only participates occasionally in these meetings, obviously, as we've all gotten used to over the past 12 months, we're conducting it by a Zoom for health reasons. Hopefully, we can all be in person in the near future. Because we're conducting it by Zoom, one thing I'd like to mention to people who only participate occasionally is by law, we have to not by Zoom, by video conferencing technology other than Zoom. But so but we have to conduct roll votes. We can't do voice votes of aye or nay. We have to do roll votes where each individual person is called on. And it can be a few times for each matter to to so they can properly record their votes. With that, I would like to turn over to Ms. Liz Olson of the City of Edina Planning Department to do a roll call.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Barubi?
Here.
Commissioner Ignu?
Here.
Commissioner Bartling?
Here.
Commissioner Alkire?
Here.
Commissioner Cullen?
Here.
Chair Nemrau?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Olson. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions or deletions? Well, if that could, does anyone move to approve the agenda?
I moved to approve the agenda as submitted.
And a great, thank you. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please, for approval of the agenda?
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Next on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was February 24th, and they were posted with everything else on last this past Friday. Does anyone have any changes or comments regarding these minutes? I have one brief thing. Later on in the evening, I'm going to discuss a little bit the public hearing. I want to, excuse me, the sketch plan review, excuse me. But I don't think that's a change to the minutes at all. I think the minutes are good on that. Anyone else have anything? We get a motion?
I did have one question, and I wasn't sure if I was just misremembering. But in the motion for the 500 Blake Road South component, the motion is noted as carrying unanimously. And then for the next one, for the B, which was the 5301 60th Street, it's noted as just motion carried. And I thought that we approved that one unanimously as well. And so if we did, we should just be consistent in noting that where we were. But maybe I'm misremembering and we didn't vote on it unanimously.
That's a great question. I don't know, Ms. Olson, are you the right person to ask or someone else on staff? Is there a certain format we want to follow? Because usually, I think you identify if if people, if somebody voted nay, I think you usually identify that.
Yes, I can chime in on that one. Yes, we do always want to include the vote. So we should say that that vote was unanimous.
Okay, and that does appear to occur a few times where it says motion carried. I think that's a good catch. So yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Agnew. Did you have anything else? Do they, with that, with changes, with, you know, changes for consistency stake along those lines, would anyone like to make a motion to approve? If you do, just say, I make a motion to approve with those changes.
Make a motion to approve with those changes.
I second.
So please do a roll vote for that.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Aye. Thank you. So next on our agenda is, we're already in section five, is welcoming new planning commissioners, David Alkire and Rachel Bartling. And I just want to say there's like two really great events that are like all upside on the planning commission. One is when you complete a big project. And the second is when you can welcome new members. So welcome. And I'm wondering if Rachel, maybe you could introduce yourself, Will and David after that, if you could introduce yourself. Welcome, new commissioners.
Hi, well, thank you. I guess I'll start. Yeah, my name is Rachel Bartling. I am a resident here in Edina. Obviously, I've been here for about a little over nine years, actually. I am an architect and have two stepchildren, a cat. And my husband is also an architect. And I always thought it would be fun to be a part of the planning commission, and so I'm excited to be a part of it. Yeah, other than that, we're going to be having, we just were approved for a foreign exchange student next year, just today. So we're excited. Welcome. Thank you.
Great, Commissioner Bartling. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Alkire, can you introduce your, welcome?
Thank you. My name's David Alkire. My family has lived in Edina for 16 years now. I know that because we moved right after our youngest was born, and he's 16. So it's an easy way to remember how long we've lived here. We've had two kids graduate from Edina Public Schools, and the youngest is a junior. So he'll be getting through the COVID virtual education and back to normal, hopefully, next year. We live near Arden Park in Minneapolis Woods and have really enjoyed living in Edina much more than we could ever possibly imagine when we moved from Minneapolis. Been involved with a couple of things with the city, back with the foundation on the parade committee, and then election chair judge in precinct 14 for a number of years. And then most recently, just finished up the street funding task force last week with the meeting with the city council. And that was what really got me interested in working on the planning commission. So really excited to join the group and look forward to working with you all. I'm retired from the Toronto company, so have lots of time to work on things like this. So excited to do it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we'll put, we'll find both things for both of you really quickly here. So that, next on our agenda is the annual election. And this year, I don't know, before we, before we, well, so we have election of a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. So before we start, I want to say we also talked at this time discussing, we also spoke at our last meeting of discussing bylaws and operating procedures. But those are still in progress. So hopefully, you can review those in a relatively soon upcoming meeting. Carrie, can I turn this over to you? I mean, what procedure would you recommend we follow here?
And this is the first time we've done this virtually, so it's a little, a little different. In the past, we've just opened the floor for nominations and started that way. You could start with the chair or start with the secretary position.
Okay, well, I think, I think we should start with chair this year, not because I'm the chair, but for other, we could talk about it in a few minutes perhaps, but are there nominations for chair?
I would be honored to nominate Ian, our current chair. So Ian, I think this would be entering your third term, if I'm correct. And I think you'd be a, continue to be a great chair. So I nominate Ian.
I will second that.
Thank you. Just for clarity, this, I've only completed one year.
Okay.
Just, just.
You've just done three years of presence.
It just feels like a long time.
On Zoom, everything is crazy.
Yeah, I look forward to being in person. Any other nominations? Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote for this nomination for chair?
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Good question. To get Ian a chair, because it looks like you're standing right now? I'm kidding, I'll say.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Thank you, and I am standing. That takes us to vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I, so I'm, I'm standing in, there's a stub period where Todd Thorson resigned his position, so I filled in for a couple of months. I've been chair, vice chair for a couple of months. And I've realized that due to other commitments, I think that someone else on the committee would be a better vice chair at this time. So I am nominating Kate Agnew to be vice chair.
Commissioner Barubi? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Very well. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote for the nomination of Commissioner Agnew to be vice chair?
Thank you. I have Commissioner Barubi for first. Was there a second for that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Congratulations, Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you.
Well, that takes us to secretary. Now, there's some unique things about that. Commissioner Agnew had been filling the role of secretary. However, so normally, you would now fill that position. However, I'm going to go back to City Development Director Teague. I received word just a few days ago that there was an expect, there's a, there's an interest on the part of the city to not have secretaries for boards and commissions any longer, unless they're already elected and they're just continuing and finishing what they were assigned to do, I guess. Commissioner, so Commissioner Teague, could you advise on what we should do at this point since the current, we aren't going to be renominating Commissioner Agnew to be secretary, obviously?
Yes, so a specific decision hasn't been made on that. It is being considered. But I've been advised to, for us to go ahead and fill that position for now. Probably the position sign, maybe one or two documents a year. It's not a really eye demanding position. But nonetheless, we've been advised to fill that position.
Okay, so yes. The activities I've seen the secretary play is sign a few documents every year. Certain formal resolutions that have been approved, not every resolution we approved, but a few formal resolutions. Also, in one of the years when I was vice chair, both the chair and I were unavailable one evening, and so the secretary moderated the meeting that night. And the word I got was you did an outstanding job. So so there are tasks, I seem to be, I seem in my, have in my head that there is at least one other task, I can't remember, but those are two of the main ones. So with that, we have an opening for secretary for the current term at least. Is, is there a nomination? And Planner T, can we take, can people, can, is this something people can nominate themselves for?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so is there, is there any nominations or is there anyone who would, who would like to take that position? That's where it gets fun. Commissioner Bennett, hello. Commissioner Jimmy?
Commissioner Jimmy, I mean, I'll step up. Pretty, pretty small commitment.
You've, you, you have some interesting things going on, so I think that's great.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm sitting down to step up, so sorry, I misspoke there again.
It looks like Sheila's muted, so I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations, nominations or people interested? That's great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bennett. Ms. Olson, would you do a roll vote for the nominate, for this nomination of Commissioner Bennett as secretary?
Absolutely. Just to be clear, I had Commissioner Barubi and Commissioner Agnew seconding that for roll call. Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemrau?
Aye. Very, very wonderful. Thank you. Next on our reports or recognitions and presentations portion is we're going to hear from the Transportation Department. Andrew, I don't want to, I think I, I'm 95% sure I know how to say your last name, but I, I don't want to get that, that, I don't want to take the 5% chance I'll get it wrong. You're the, you, you joined the company, you joined the city, you're the city's transportation planner. Could you introduce yourself to everyone and take it away? And, you know, we're welcome. We're glad, you know, this is something we're interested in.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Nemrau, and thank you, members of the planning commission. My name is Andrew Scipione. I'm the transportation planner for the city. Let me start my chair, my screen here. I've got a brief presentation. So tonight, I'll be sharing the staff's draft travel demand management policy. This is a follow-up of a work plan item that the planning commission was involved in in 2019. So I'll talk a little bit about TDM and what's included in our comprehensive plan. I'll speak to the ET, the Transportation Commission and the planning commission's work on this. Explain a little bit about the draft staff policy that's before you, how it compares to what the commissions drafted two years ago, how it compares to what other cities are doing with regards to TDM, and then the impacts to the planning commission. So in the, our transportation chapter of the comprehensive plan, goal number five is to promote a travel demand management program, a coordinated program of regulations, marketing, and provision of alternative workplace and travel options. Essentially, when we're talking about TDM, what we, the focus is on reducing the number of vehicles that are on congested roadways during peak travel times. There's a whole host of different strategies that can be implemented to achieve this TDM goal. They're generally grouped into these four buckets. I won't elaborate on each of them specifically, but generally, they relate to ways to encourage active transportation. So ways to encourage people to bike or walk as a mode of transportation. Carried mobility, so carpool, vanpool, and micro mobility services like bike sharing or scooter sharing, even car sharing platforms. Encouraging use of transit services and providing associated amenities to encourage transit use. And then flexible work scheduling, where I'm sure most of us are familiar with that in the last year, flex time, staggered hours, and resources to, to be able to work from home and that kind of thing. So as I mentioned before, the Transportation Commission, two years ago, had a work plan initiative to, where they chaired a cross-commission committee with planning to review TDM options and to recommend to city council a TDM policy or ordinance. At the end of this, the culmination of this work was that the commissioners presented a draft ordinance to council at a work session in April of last year. Based on the council's feedback at that work session, staff was then directed to prepare a TDM policy for consideration. So the draft policy would basically require development applications to include a TDM plan as part of their traffic impact study. As a reminder, the traffic impact studies are generally required if site density is being proposed to increase, parking variances are requested, a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment is requested, or if it's along a roadway that is approaching or over capacity. So the policy establishes two levels of, of application for, for a TDM, basically two levels of TDM plans. Tier one is kind of the more aggressive approach. This would apply to projects, proposed projects that have 50 or more residential units, 100 or more vehicle parking stalls required, projects that are requesting a parking stall variance, or as otherwise requested by council condition. Some previous examples, some examples of previous projects that would fall under this category include 7001 France, the Millennium at Southdale, or Edmonton Flats. Then you have the tier two, the tier two category, which is a smaller category. This would be projects that have 10 or more residential units, 20 or more vehicle parking stalls required, a floor area of over 5,000 square feet, or as otherwise required by council condition. And some previous examples that fall under this tier would be Edina Flats, New Horizon Academy, or Caribou Coffee and Bagels. So within the two tiers, there are different requirements for the TDM plan that are spelled out in the policy. Generally, both plans, both tiers would require identification of strategies, implementation measures, and a timeline for when those measures would be implemented. The difference between the tiers is the minimum required, minimum number of required strategies to be identified. So the tier one plan recommends a minimum of five unique strategies to be identified in the plan. Whereas the tier two plan recommends a minimum of three unique strategies identified. Both plans also, both tiers also require disclosure of proposed expenditures related to the implementation of those strategies. And then the tier one plan goes even further to require analysis of anticipated single occupancy vehicle trip reduction and establishment of peak and total SOV trip reduction goals, and then evaluation measures to determine if the TDM strategies are, are meeting those goals. My recommendation is for the TDM plans to be reviewed by engineering staff as part of the traffic impact studies, which is, engineering already reviews the traffic impact studies associated with these developments. As part of that process, staff will assess whether or not the, the submitted TDM plan satisfies the policy requirements based on whether it's a tier one or a tier two TDM plan. The planning commission and city council will then have discretion to recommend approval of the project, whether it meets the TDM policy or not. If a project is, is approved and has a TDM plan, staff will then verify whether or not the proposed TDM strategies have actually been implemented on site prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy. So comparing the staff policy to the, to the ordinance that's in your, in your packet, the levels of applicability and the plan requirements are very similar. Some of the significant changes in the staff policy is that there's no three-year plan requirement, there's no agreement that needs to be filed with the city attorney, and there's no financial guarantee included. That was something that the city council did not express an interest in at the work session, is that financial guarantee. I'm proposing that the TDM plans be administered by the city engineer rather than the community development director. This would be consistent with the way that we look at the traffic impact studies currently. And then there's also no annual status report required, but in the tier, recall, in the tier one TDM plan, there is that requirement to provide evaluation measures. Comparing this policy to what our neighboring cities are doing, most other communities have TDM language in their ordinances to varying degrees. Minneapolis, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, and Eden Prairie, their ordinances include applicability thresholds and specific plan requirements, similar to what this draft policy has. Hopkins has language that allows off-street parking to be reduced if a TDM plan is submitted. And then Minnetoka and Richfield, their ordinances say that TDM plans may be included in traffic impact studies, but it's, it's more or less left at the discretion of, the discretion of staff, whether or not those are included. So this policy essentially combines the, the detailed threshold and plan requirements of those former cities with the discretionary application of the latter cities. The impact to the planning commission, so similar to current development projects, the engineering department prepares a memo that is included with the commission's packet when they're reviewing these projects. That memo, if this policy is, is approved, will not only include a review of the general findings of that traffic impact study, but also will include an assessment of whether or not the submitted TDM plan complies with the TDM policy requirements. So again, the commission and city council still, the commission will have the ability to comment on the submitted TDM plans prior to council considering the projects. And council, again, council will ultimately have the discretion of whether or not to approve a project if it, if it does not meet the TDM plan, the TDM policy requirements. I understand that there's some, this, there's some overlap with this policy and the commission's current work reviewing the parking ordinance, specifically the section related to parking space reductions. And I think that warrants some, some future discussion as to whether or not those, those specific initiatives would be better, better to be put in an ordinance at this time, or in a policy, or some, some combination of the two. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, your chance. Anyone have questions? Commissioner Alkire, welcome. First question.
Yes, Andrew, thank you very much for that presentation. Just for a little context, in the information about when a traffic impact study is required, it talked about projects that are adjacent to an intersection operating at a level of service D or along a roadway corridor operating at a volume, volume to capacity ratio of 0.8 or higher. Can you just say a few words about what that means and maybe give us some context of what, you know, typical arteries that we might be familiar with would, would fit in that classification?
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner. So the, there's a, there's a diagram in, a map in the transportation chapter of the comprehensive plan that identifies corridors that are either approaching capacity or are over capacity, both for the current year and projected for 2040. Some of those include, I believe, 50th Street, 70th Street, Vernon, I apologize, I don't recall all of them off the top of my head. But that, that map is, is the, kind of the primary source for determining whether or not development is, meets that criteria.
Okay, do you have follow-up on that?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take myself off mute. No, that, that does answer my question. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Bennett?
Sorry, Jerry. Do you want to go?
Oh, yeah, mine is just quick. Maybe it's precarious for Andrew. When, when do we start seeing these reports or these, is this? When, when do we start seeing these reports, or these, is this, is this, I mean, this upcoming spring, summer, is that when we will start seeing these?
Yeah, I could take that. It's once the, assuming the, well, once the City Council approves the policy, you would start to see that then with the, within the traffic impact studies that are done for redevelopment projects.
And Perry, I assume you're, you're in full agreement that, I think, it sounds like the administration or the, with the city engineer, that is the appropriate?
I believe so, yeah, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Commissioner Bennett, do you still have questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Andrew, I mean, as with any policy, you know, we have, we have some goals that we're trying to achieve, you know, with the purpose of this, and certainly it's to just, you know, mitigate traffic and, at the same time, improve the health of, you know, residents by increasing the chance of you biking, walking to places too. Where in the preparation of this do you feel like there, it might fall a little short, or you guys had maybe the most tension in trying to wrestle with, like, oh, man? What was the toughest spot that you tried to, I guess, address in the preparation of this policy? I'm just curious if there was one specific area or a couple?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I would say a difficult, certainly a difficult part of drafting this policy was to balance the objectives of the Transportation Commission with the direction that council gave us. And a part of that was the speaking back, speaking to the financial guarantee component that the Transportation Commission recommended. Council at the work session was concerned that that would, in some cases, it may deter potential development, or they were concerned about, in general, putting another restriction or requirement on these development projects. And it was also noted that in, in recent months, more projects have, on their own, started to include TDM strategies. So, to some extent, it seems like that's, the market is kind of headed in that direction. So, the, my goal here was to kind of balance the, having specific thresholds and requirements of those plans, within those, within those TDM plans, but to still ultimately leave it to council's discretion as to whether or not to, to enforce them.
Thank you, no, that helps, and I guess that kind of piggybacks to my second question, which, I guess, with the, without the financial guarantee, looking forward, what, you know, where might we, where might we see accountability in upholding the plan once it's in place? Without that, I mean, and without an annual report, I mean, how do we know that anything's being upheld? I guess I just, I just want to know that we have some sort of guarantee with once stuff's laid out. Is there any with this policy or not?
That's a good question. The, the kind of the way that I'm looking at this policy is basically a starting point. I think there's, there's an understanding between the Transportation Commission and that City Council that eventually this could grow to become an ordinance and to be adopted as an ordinance, so it would have more teeth. But I think the goal here is to, or at least for, for council, and not to speak for council, but based on the feedback they gave us at the work session, is that let's, let's try this out, let's see what kind of compliance we get from, in projects. And again, that kind of compliance rate will be included in engineering department's memos. And if, say, in the first six months or the first year of applying this policy, we, we don't see a lot of compliance with it, then I think there, that would warrant further discussion as to whether or not some teeth needs to be added to it.
I'll jump in and add to that. I would see conditions of approval of redevelopment projects, one of the conditions would be compliance with this TDM plan. So, I think we have a little bit of teeth in that if they're blatantly not following something, we could follow up, you know, citing them not in compliance with the conditions of approval. If they fail to comply, we could bring it back in front of the City Council. So, that's kind of our, that would be how we would enforce it moving forward.
Okay, and then one last thing for you, just how this relates to us specifically, and I know one of the best practices with, you know, effective TDM is land use management and urban design, and so how do we, how can we help specifically when matters like that come before us? And is there, is there guidance outside of this policy that can help prompt developers to, you know, starting, thinking about that? Because a lot of it, a lot of it is focused with, you know, how you're using your land and how it's set up with either the land use and the urban design versus us reacting to a bad proposal first. Is any of that laid out in there at all? And I guess how can we help when it comes to us?
Sure, I guess, I would say there are a lot of resources out there about TDM strategies and which are, you know, they're varying levels of efficacy. I think it's important to note that each, each specific project, each specific site is unique, and one TDM strategy that will work really well for one project may not do anything to another project. Transit in particular is, I think, really a key one that, and I personally am hoping that we see more projects put a focus on encouraging transit, transit service and transit amenities. But at the same time, I recognize that we have relatively limited transit service in some parts of the, in some parts of our community, and so that, those strategies, you know, won't do anything in those areas. But... I lost my train of thought. I guess, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, yeah, that helps. I get, you know, just how it relates to us specifically, like what, what ought we to look for and encourage when things are before us to help uphold, you know, some of the guarantee? You know, a lot of it's just with how the design and how the land uses, you know, propose to us, so I guess maybe there's some resources you could point out to us to, you know, read and just be prepared on to better handle potential developments that come up that are going to use this policy. That's it, thanks.
Sure, I can certainly look into that, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Planner Teague, you want, you have something?
I was just going to add that, being that these will be part of traffic studies, that's one of the first things that we point to and get started when a developer comes in. So, they'll be, they'll be made aware right up front that they need to come up with this TDM plan, so they'll have, you know, a couple of months to prepare a plan before you see it, so that should help just where it falls in in the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Planner Teague. Commissioner Miranda, hi.
Hi. So, my question kind of piggybacks off of Commissioner Bennett's question. So, I guess my question is, you know, this is a policy rather than ordinance, and so I was on the TDM committee with people from the Transportation Commission, and, you know, we learned that, I think it was Eden Prairie had a policy, and many, or Bloomington had an ordinance, and one of the risks there was that a policy could be challenged, you know, if they really wanted to, but apparently no one has ever challenged, no developer's never challenged it, so I don't think it was an issue. But related to that, what, you know, are there, other, or maybe Commissioner Teague can answer this, are there other policies that the Planning Commission addresses? I mean, how, I guess, my question is about process, I mean, what does it look like when it comes here, and how do we comment on, on that sort of thing?
Oh, yeah, so the other policy that you consider is the affordable housing policy. So, oftentimes when we're considering redevelopment, you know, you don't have to, it's one of the things that we're evaluating when we're evaluating a rezoning. So, I would see this as very similar. Developer will likely be asking us, asking the city for a rezoning or relief from some of our standards, and this would be one of the tools that we're looking for in order for them to achieve that. So, it's another tool for you in considering rezonings.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you. I want to go back to, again, also one of Commissioner Bennett's points, and I think it came up maybe a couple of times about how we hold people accountable. And I, I appreciate the idea of, you know, starting here, seeing how it goes, and seeing what that compliance rate is. The question that I have is whose responsibility it is, or how we've built it into this process to check up, to validate whether or not that compliance is happening? And the example that I think of, right, because a lot of the outline in the policy was related to structural things, like those things you can go and you can see, and it's easy. But if there is a restaurant who is proposing distributing bus passes to their employees to drive down the number of parking spaces needed, how are we going to validate that that's actually a part of something that they're continuing? It's not something that's as easy to validate compliance with.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I would anticipate that I will probably be the one to verify compliance on these TDM strategies that are proposed. And when, if and when this policy is adopted, I would expect, you know, a year following that the engineering department has a, has a project where we, we do a study or a review of projects that were approved and constructed under this policy to see if they are still following up with their, with their TDM plans, if they still have their strategies in place. And then from there, we can decide to revise the policy at that time, or consider adopting it into an ordinance if we find that it's being effective.
Wonderful, thank you, and thanks for taking that on. The, the second question that I have, and this, maybe this definition was listed somewhere and I just missed it, what is a qualified traffic consultant? Is that an official title that someone will be hired to perform in these situations?
Good question. So, generally, a qualified traffic consultant is somebody who is either a professional engineer and has a professional engineering license, or someone who is that in addition to a, what's called a PTOE, or a professional traffic operations engineer. Most of the consultants that have prepared our traffic studies in the past are one or both of those two have, have one or both of those licensed certifications.
Perfect, thank you very much. That concludes my questions.
Anyone else, everyone had an opportunity, anyone else? Okay, I have a few. And Andrew and I had an opportunity to exchange some thoughts before, but I'm, I'm going to repeat a few of my things, I got a few new things. So, when we created the comp plan and our small area plans, the city of Edina developed basically kind of a give-to-get program, where there's, there's, there's like a menu of things developers can do if they wish to vary from our zoning ordinances. You know, some kind of traffic, you know, traffic reduction is one of them, you know, things related to traffic, things related to environmental goals, things related to public art, contribution to the public rights of way, certain affordable housing, there's a long variety, a long list of things that the, that the developers can elect to choose from in order to get a variance. Now, if we implement a traffic demand management policy, which we're saying they have to do to get a variance, doesn't that kind of elevate traffic over all those other things we said in the comprehensive plan that were something that, like a menu the developer could choose from? And if it does elevate it, which it seems to me it does, why, why, you know, this, it's neutral, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be aggressive with this question, literally, I mean, what are the reasons why traffic should be elevated over those other items that are on the menu in the comprehensive plan that developers can choose from?
I guess I would, thank you, Chair Nimra for the question. I would point to the fact that transportation affects many other categories or topics related to new developments, particularly environmental, environmental considerations, you know, more vehicles traveling because more carbon emissions, more, potentially more impervious surface for parking lots and things like that. And then there's also relates to housing affordability, having, having more, requiring more parking can raise the price of residential units. So, I guess I, I don't know that I, I don't feel like I'm in a position where I'm necessarily saying that I think transportation is more important than some of those other categories, but I definitely think there's an overlap between transportation and those.
If I could add to that, we may have a developer that chooses to not meet some of the goals that we're, that we're looking for them to meet. Andrew would then evaluate that in his memo, and it gives us an opportunity to, you know, it's one of those things that we would evaluate for what the developer is, is asking for. You know, we've had developers come through and choose not to meet the affordable housing policy, and result could be, well, if you're not doing that, that's one of our reasons for denial. So, there's still some, some flexibility. We could, we could even, if they're choosing to not do certain things, we could even condition that they do certain things as it relates to travel demand management, and they can choose whether they want to meet those conditions or not.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's still, to a certain degree, we're now elevating though, travel demand management is a priority for developers. How do we, everybody shares the goal, I believe, as far as I know, I haven't spoken literally with everyone on this call, but I believe that everybody shares the goal regarding environmental. How do we know this will be effective? For example, I sent you an article this week that was published by a couple of professors from MIT, one of which, who I believe now is at the Humphrey Institute, who posted in a journal, the peer-reviewed journal that, I don't know, maybe it's not peer-reviewed, but they posted in a journal that ride-sharing actually increases congestion. Because what ride-sharing does is it pulls cars from, it generally pulls riders from buses as opposed to pulling, their, their, their position is it doesn't pull car, people from driving their own cars, it actually adds cars. So, how do we know that this will be effective? And not just, you know, because we always want to be light with our regulations, we don't want to add burdensome regulations that don't help anyone, right? I mean...
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Good question. I think, first, I think it's important to note that that's part of the reason why I'm proposing that more than one TDM strategy be identified. So, and it kind of goes back to my previous, previous point that certain strategies are going to be more effective for, for certain projects, more so than others, and ride-sharing is certainly one of them. There have been, SPAC Engineering did a, did a study in, I think, 2014, where they looked at TDM plans that were implemented in the Twin Cities, and in that, in that study, they found that on average, this, and this is specific to office buildings, but they found that those that had TDM plans generated on average thirty-four to thirty-seven percent less traffic, and needed seventeen to twenty-four percent less parking. So, I think there's, that combined with kind of some other statistics... So I think there's, that combined with kind of some other statistics on a national level generally show that applying TDM strategies will have some kind of benefit. But I guess I can't speak with 100% certainty on what benefits we will see until the policy is implemented and then analyzed and reviewed.
There's probably, you know, studies can go both ways. So just because some MIT professor said one thing, there could be some other prestigious professors that have a different viewpoint. So you had an opportunity, as you mentioned, to review our draft revisions to the parking ordinance, where we kind of put carrots in place for people to reduce their parking requirements if they follow, if they implement certain TDM activities. Do you think a stick is better than a carrot at this point? Because this policy is kind of like a mandate as opposed to, here, we've kind of laid out specific objectives. If you do this, and it's kind of a TDM thing, we actually have different measures, you can reduce your parking requirements by 10%. Do you think that having some kind of mandate might be more effective?
I think that the way that the draft parking ordinance is worded to relate to parking requirements, I personally think that's a good way to go about it. And I certainly think that language in the ordinance is going to carry more weight than a staff policy.
Someone overlap, right? They say, look, I'm choosing to follow the ordinance, and that would meet your, one of the factors you're looking for.
Right. And if they, I mean, if those changes to the ordinance were adopted, then we would likely have to go back to the TDM policy and reassess what exactly we're, what we're asking to make sure that the policy and the parking ordinance aren't in conflict with each other, or we aren't asking contradictory things.
Okay. If you have any feedback, please, the earlier you have the things you want to add or things you have concerns about, be awesome to get it. You've given written feedback previously, and your stuff is awesome. So anything you got would be very, I'm willing to predict money in Vegas that it would be helpful if you have feedback. My final question is regarding the discretionary nature of the review process. It seems like right now is at a level where the developer, it's kind of blank slade-ish. The developer can come up with something, then they review it with you and the city engineer. How will you establish standards? Is it going to be kind of a case-by-case situation? And is that, I understand that's done in other cities, it sounds like. Is that, is that legal, really? I mean, is that effective and is it actually legal to have kind of a undocumented case-by-case review depending on staff determination?
Carrie, maybe you can help me with the question of the legality?
I think it's high ordinance, so a developer is not required to do it. But again, I compare it to the affordable housing policy. If a developer chooses not to follow or do a TDM plan, their chances aren't very good that they're going to get the project that they're asking for.
Policy. Yeah. So again, that gets right to my first ques, Carrie, that actually gets right to my first question. Now, we, seriously, we have elevated TDM above everything else in the comp plan, if you're saying that. And maybe that's okay. It's not my decision. I mean, you know, we wrote the comp plan, we all worked really hard to do that, and it was a lot of public engagement to get where we got. I mean, it came out of the Southdale Plan, which was three years of hard work. And, you know, now we're changing that effectively, and that's okay. I mean, that's for staff and city council to decide, but that's kind of what you just said. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe share my thoughts on that statement. And I think it's accurate to some degree. I mean, a lot of the focus of the comp plan and what we're talking about right now really only revolves around, you know, the nodes of Edina. I mean, we're not talking about anywhere else. This is really Grandview, Valley View, Wooddale, 44th and France, 50th and France, Southdale. So it's not like this is a blanket thing for the whole city. It's in our nodes, and the thing we know about our nodes is you have to get there, right? I mean, people are going to get there, and that's what all these projects will have in common. You have to get there, and it's how do we manage that? And probably one of the most frequent complaints or opportunities to improve any project, I would say, comes down to density, which is really someone's concern with traffic and transportation management. So I think rightfully so, this is elevated, and it should be. Because like Andrew mentioned too, it's not just traffic. I mean, this touches everything. Like I was getting to health. If we can increase the likelihood of people to walk and get to work by different modes of transportation, that's just better for our community. So I think we have a rare opportunity to develop a policy around something that touches a lot of areas that we want to see improvement on. And transportation is something every development will have in common. So I don't know if that helps answer, but I feel good about it.
That's 100% fair. I just think we need to recognize that we are basically changing a portion of the comp plan regarding give-to-get now, particularly with regard to Southdale and 50th and France and perhaps 44th and France, where, again, these traffic-related things were a menu for the developer to choose from. And now we're replacing it instead of with a, replacing it with a policy, which isn't even a, you know, which isn't even like an official rule. It's just like, you know, I'm not a big policy fan. You know, I've done business in a lot of countries where they have rules and they have policies, and the policies are what drive you crazy when you're trying to get something organized in that country. So just my thoughts. We can, as a group, I'll stop my long here. We can, as a group, and the transportation commission and the council can decide to go down that path. I just think we should recognize that's what we're doing. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's important to note that it sounds like what you're saying is, would be similar if we decided that we needed, you know, fire extinguishing systems in every building, you know, and that's going to take over from other things. You know, I mean, this is something that might have been part of give-to-get, so it was one of many things that could have been done. And perhaps this is a realization that transportation goes so closely hand-in-hand with development that we actually do need to do it in tandem. So, I mean, I don't think it's elevation like the other ones don't matter, you know, but I think it's clear that you can't, and you know, there's something I always say, you can't really do development without acknowledging transportation, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Although I don't think the analogy is fire extinguisher. I think the analogy would be now, like, one of the give-to-gets, for example, was certain kinds of environment, meeting certain kinds of enhanced environmental standards in buildings. So now, if the environmental commission says, well, we're going to, we're going to also, you're going to meet these things, you got to do this to just get a variance, then that'll get prioritized also over everything else. So we, and that's okay. We can decide to do that. I just think we should recognize that is what we're doing. We're, instead of having an equal menu, we're prioritizing transportation, for good reason. You guys are all raising good reasons why it should be prioritized, but I just want to recognize that transportation is important, you know, as we're going forward particularly.
I think you raised a good point. I would love to see the environmental commission come up with a similar policy that we could hold folks to.
Yeah, maybe every commission now should just come up with the policy. We could take it out of give-to-get and just give them a list of a lot of new requirements. Sure, that can be a decision. I think it's a bad idea, but that could be what the city decides to do.
I'm looking fun at that. I think what this offers is much better direction around transportation opportunities. Because in the give-to-get, you know, it's a bullet list of things that can be interpreted a lot of different ways and take a different way. And we've seen that happen with development, where someone justifies, well, hey, look at these environmental considerations that I have built into the project. And we're like, what? That, like, you put an energy efficient fridge in there, everyone's doing it, like, that's not helping, right? So I think it's a good step forward to build a policy around it. And who knows, maybe in 10 years, there will be policies around all that, but it's just for an easier process for developers, but who knows?
Thanks. That's all I had, so I don't want to belabor my already belabored points. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Scipione? Andrew, thank you very much. You've done a great job with tonight's presentation and dealing with my questions. And thank you and good luck with how this proceeds.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for the commission's work on this initiative.
Thank you. So the next matter on our agenda is a public hearing for a side yard setback at 6117 Chauvin Avenue South. And first appearing for the city will be Assistant City Planner Emily Boddicker. Hi, Emily.
Presentation here. Can you guys hear me? Odor. How's that? Any better?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Thank you. 6117 Chauvin is located on the east side of Chauvin Avenue, south of 61st Street and north of Chauvin Curve. The existing home was built in 1955 and is a one-story rambler. The existing one-story rambler has a 6.7-foot non-conforming north side yard setback. The applicant has submitted a request tonight for a 3.3-foot side yard setback variance to construct a second floor addition that aligns with the current non-conforming setback on the first floor on the north side of the existing house. The current house does not meet to the setbacks required in today's code on the north or south side, so either side yard setback. The existing setback to the north property line is 6.7 feet instead of today's required 10 feet. The proposed addition will maintain that existing setback on the north side of the house. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 district. The proposed addition complies with the zoning standards with the exception of that side yard setback requirement. The practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home and today's required setbacks. Due to the addition being on a different floor, the non-conforming setback standard does not apply. If an addition were to happen on the first floor, a non-conforming setback could continue up to a certain amount of square footage. But due to the fact that the addition is on the second floor, that would not apply in this situation. The home will be refurbished and modified within the existing setbacks, and this original home was built without variances. The existing house was built prior to today's ordinance requirements in 1955. Or it was built in 1955, when there was different setback requirements. The addition will continue the non-conforming setback on the second floor that was allowed when the home was originally constructed. The setback requirements have changed over time and have created some non-conformities, and this was not self-created by the applicant. Staff believes that granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and tonight, the recommendation is to approve a 3.3-foot side yard setback variance for an existing non-conforming home at 6117 Chauvin, based on the findings and conditions outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can answer any questions, and the applicant is also on the call tonight.
Thank you, Planner Boddicker. Do any members of the planning commission have questions for the city staff at this point? And if you do, just shout them out right now. Identify yourself. Commissioner Agnew?
It's a quick question. Did I hear correctly that the reason that there isn't a variance required for the south side is that even though it's non-conforming at this point, it's because they're not building anything that's touching that sidewall, that south sidewall?
Correct. If there were a proposed, or if the addition, proposed addition was directly over that non-conforming garage side of the house, there would be a variance required, but because there isn't any addition in that area, there is not a variance required.
Thank you. That's the only clarification I had.
This is, yeah, it's a question for Emily. Yeah, Emily, I'm looking at the compliance table. And generally, one of the items covered is the overall height. And I don't see, is that not a factor here? I mean, it seems like it's a considerable change in the overall height of this project versus homes on either side.
That was, you're right, that wasn't included in the compliance table, but the overall height is, does comply with the zoning requirements. They would be required to meet the 30-foot requirement, and the house is shown at around 28 feet, 28.3 feet. And that includes, that measurement is taken from average existing grade. And the grade on this lot, it's not changing.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Ruby?
I think that my question was answered. I just wrote down quickly, Planner Boddicker, when you said the second floor setback variance doesn't apply because it's on the second floor. But this is, I think, the same question that Commissioner Agnew had. It's because they're not building right there.
Yeah, what I meant in that statement is that if there was an addition on the first floor, that we have a non-conforming setback standard, and that standard does not apply because the addition is on the second floor, on the first floor where the existing non-conformity is today.
Okay. I think the only reason that's confusing is because we've had a couple of these over the last few months, and they've always been on the second floor. And they've always been in cases where, when the house was originally built, I think we could assume they were in compliance at that point. But then they're building a second floor, and the second floor is not in compliance, so.
That's the same situation here.
So I guess the only reason that's confusing is because I think those were brought in front of the commission for discussion in the past.
So I think, so if there were an addition on the first floor, like, let's say, to the east of the existing house, that non-conforming setback could continue at the 6.7 feet up to a certain amount. But because it's, the proposed addition is not on the first floor, there isn't an existing 6.7-foot setback on the second floor today is the reason why they need a variance for the second floor.
Okay.
Sorry, to make it more confusing.
It's a little confusing.
The non-conforming setback clause is a little...
Okay. So basically, so what we're talking about is the 3.4. You're asking for the variance for the 3.4?
Yep, the 3.3 feet.
Nothing above the 6.7? Okay.
Other questions for Planner Boddicker?
I know that the overhangs, sorry, this is Rachel Bartling. Question, the overhang doesn't tend to play into the setbacks. However, because we're encroaching at such a close proximity, what are the overhangs changing on this?
I'll ask the applicant if he wants to answer that question.
We'll let the applicant come in just a moment. Commissioner Bartling, did you have any other questions for, at this point, for the city staff?
Not at this point.
Okay. Then Commissioner Bennett, did you have a question or two?
Yeah, Emily mentioned something with, you know, if you continue on the first floor, is that square footage still 200 square feet of what you could build up to?
Up to what's existing today or what's existing within the required setback, up to 200 square feet, whichever is less.
Okay. I was just trying to remember some of these things, so good. All right, thanks.
Any commissioners, any further question, commission, any further questions by commissioners for staff? There'll always be another opportunity later also. If none, I'd like to invite the applicant to speak, if they'd like. This would be your opportunity to make your pitch. Would anyone for the applicant like to speak tonight? It's not required.
Okay, I just want to keep it simple. Um, I'm a builder. I do a lot of, uh, remodel projects in Minneapolis and also in Edina. Um, I occasionally do, um, have to file for, uh, variances like we're doing tonight to me, to be able to re to bring these houses up to people's expectations for the neighborhood currently. Um, there's a ton of new construction in Edina, as I'm sure all you guys know. And my goal is to make these houses fit the new direction without doing complete new construction. So sometimes that kind of creates some oddities with, uh, um, setbacks and stuff. So I really do appreciate you guys taking the time to look this over and you've been very helpful in the past. Um, in regard to the overhang, uh, we do have a one foot overhang on that, uh, north side that's the setback in question. So we did keep that relatively minimal. We could minimize that if you guys thought it was important. But I don't want to go too small because it could add an unusual, um, feature to the house. And, uh, otherwise, I think that pretty much does it on my end. I don't want to try to oversell it. Um, it is, um, I think just, uh, it's, I think it's a good thing to work with these existing houses and not, and not demo, demo so many of them as I see being done. So, um, I really do appreciate your guys' open mindedness to let this move forward.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant or, or further questions regard, you know? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, and I guess it's not particularly relevant, but, um, how many car stalls are there in the garage?
Uh, there is one.
Okay, and that's what they're today?
Yes. Yep, that's an existing garage.
Okay, so they're not expanding the garage in any way?
They are not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I guess just, uh, confirm, uh, Commissioner Bartling's question. So you said the one foot overhang. Was, was it one foot prior to this proposal? I mean, is that what is existing out there currently?
Um, I believe, hold on just one second here. Let me take a look.
Yeah. I thought you were gonna start walking, get in your car and go check it out.
Yeah. Go for a ride.
Yeah.
The existing overhang is two feet.
Okay, so it's less than that. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Alkire?
Uh, good evening. I had, uh, I noticed in the packet, there was some feedback from the neighbor to the south, I think it was. But could you just comment on whether there's been dialogue with the neighbor in the north who is closer to the uh, addition and with, you know, people in the general area and what kind of feedback you've gotten?
Uh, no, I have not. Um, during, during this time, I've kind of kept communications limited and I did not send out a notice or anything. So I haven't had any dialogue with the neighbors.
This is Liz. I can speak to that a little bit. Um, any homeowner within two hundred feet was notified prior to this meeting and we only received one correspondence and it was the one that was just noted. Uh, no other folks have reached out or made comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Reno, is it?
Uh, no, uh, Neil Tyson.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you very much.
My name is, uh, Tyson renovations on my, uh, on the screen here I see, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I have something different. Great, great. Thank you. I have something different on my, I'm seeing still, but thank you. So, um, at this stage of the meeting, it's, this is a public hearing, which means that any people any wish to call in to give testimony about this matter can. So I'm going to give some information now. If you'd like to call in, if you're watching and you'd like to call in and give a comment, please dial one eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Enter conference ID one nine seven three nine six two. Press star one to be placed into queue. City staff will then admit you into the call. You'll have up to three minutes to speak and we'll let you know if you're approaching or when you've hit the three minutes. And we ask if you do call in, um, if we get several calls, try to be unique. In other words, we don't, it doesn't, we, we, these calls are to help give us perspective on a matter and getting several of the same perspectives doesn't necessarily change it, but getting, you know, two unique comments is much more, you know, much more valuable to us. So with that, I'll go over to, uh, back to Dan and Scott and ask if we have any calls.
Good evening, Chair Nemirov, members of the planning commission. Uh, as of right now, we do not have any calls. Uh, however, given the delay, I would advise we wait about a minute, uh, to see if anyone does call in. I've got eight sixteen right now. So if we want to wait till about eight seventeen, I will let you know if anyone joins. Yeah, I think that's been close to a minute. Nobody on the call, so feel free to move forward.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, to do that, we need a motion to close in a second to close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make that?
I move to close the pub here.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote for that?
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Bennett?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Agnew?
Hi.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Hey, so the public meeting is closed and now it's the portion of the public hearing for the planning commission to consider this matter. And that would include discussion, any further questions that you have for the commissioners have for the applicant or for the city staff? Or a motion regarding this matter. Does anyone wish to start off a con, start off the conversation? Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, you, we, we've, we've approved these rather routinely, uh, um, even I think our last meeting indicated something pretty much the same thing. But I just, I wanted to make a comment to the, uh, to the, to I guess the builder owner, uh, Mr. Tyson. Um, I, I, I liked his comments about what he was trying to do and, uh, his approach to things that, that, um, speaks well. Um, so I'd just like to acknowledge that that's a I'm in agreement with that kind of, those sort of attitudes too. Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss, anyone, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I, relevant to this project and then kind of beyond it. First, yeah, like Commissioner Strauss mentioned, this is kind of routine here, you know? This wasn't, um, by their doing, it was an existing nonconformity. Um, and from what we've learned and what we see, this is not going to change the character of the neighborhood, et cetera. Um, and on the bigger scale of that's why I support is although the tear down rebuilds, we know are good for the pocketbook of the city. Um, a lot of extra tax coming in. We know and hear from a lot of residents, the, the more we can limit that and, um, you know, keep some of the existing homes or modify existing homes. You know, inherently, the more affordable they are and the more diversity will welcome into the city. So, um, I'm sure people have seen the campaign with the homes within reach that the city's been sending out. Also, this seeing these kind of proposals specific to this one, uh, where it's just a modification of existing home, I am in full support of as I am with this one here today. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Anyone else with questions or comments?
I'll just, um, follow up with, with Commissioner Bennett's comments. You know, this is, we, I think it was last meeting, we had one very similar and then we probably had three or four in the last six months similar to this. Um, so I would suggest maybe we put in the parking lot that for a future work session, we talk about whether this couldn't be codified eventually. So staff would have authority to do this instead of having it come to the planning commission. Um, just something for discussion because it does seem pretty routine. If the foundation, you know, the first floor is already built out um, to go up another story. You know, we've never had any issue with that. It's never been more than just a routine matter. So, um, anyway, I would just suggest we put that in the parking lot for further discussion at some future point. And, um, you know, maybe put this in the routine bucket and we won't have to spend time on it.
Uh, this is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bartling?
Yeah, and just a, a note after that, and I, I think that's a great idea to put in the parking lot. But just a comment too, in this case, um, the second story is going up over a single story garage. So you know, neighbor to the north may want to build up as well. And then we might be having bedroom windows within six feet of each other, or I guess it'd be nine feet. So that's where it starts to get, I mean, that's where the, you know, starts to pull on privacy and, and interesting things that may come on that. So that's just a con, something to think about on that. But oh, again, on just a comment on everyone else's. I think that this is generally, um, a great concept of not doing the, the, not the knockdowns and continuing with, with that as well. So thank you.
Commissioner Bartling and Commissioner Berube? Anyone else? Commissioner Miranda?
I'd just like to congratulate the owners on sticking with a one car garage. I wonder if that has something to do with the fact they're close to France Avenue, but.
I knew you were gonna mention something about that, Lou. I could see it on your face earlier. I'm like, I know he's thinking about that one car garage. You're gonna ask a question, but you support it.
Yeah, I was, I'm shocked actually that somebody would still do that, but, uh, it is pretty close to where the E line is gonna go, so.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? I guess I have one or two actually. Um, these are kind of repeating things said earlier and it is, I kind of balance it because, uh, I do, I also like the, let's remodel this existing house. But kind of what taking a lead from something Commissioner Bartling said earlier is I, I do have a longstanding concern about using setback lines that were designed for a one story house and a one, when a one story house is built and then allowing the same setback line to then be applied to a two story house or, or, or a much taller house. So I, I think it's something we should consider in the future, uh, whether that is appropriate. Um, but those are my comments. Um, anyone else have any comments, questions, motions?
I move that we approve the proposal as submitted in the meeting packet.
I second.
And, uh, we, we have a, a motion a second. Could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Bennett?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Agnew?
Hi.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Chair Nemirov?
Hi. So congratulations, Mr. Tyson. Thank you very much for your appearance here tonight and we wish you the best of luck with this bill, with this remodel.
Thank you very much.
Well, that concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Now we go to chair and member comments. So I'd like to first open the floor to any members that wish to make comments. And then Commissioner Miranda?
I didn't hear that. Did you say me first? Yeah, okay.
You're number one.
No, I, uh, there, there's been some news locally and it's making its way beyond locally about the the Homes Within Reach campaign that Edina is doing. And if you're not familiar, just Google it. I know we've talked about, I think we've talked about it before, but it's just a way that the city is trying to be proactive about maintaining some of the older, smaller homes. Uh, you know, to, to keep some affordability in the neighborhoods that are changing very rapidly. So if you haven't seen or heard about it, just Google it and it's worth a read.
Very much, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Miranda?
Sure, I just wanted to say that, uh, well, a couple of things. First one is that we had, uh, friends over, uh, for the first time outside. Um, because of the social distancing and COVID and whatnot, my partner's been, uh, vaccinated. And so we, and one of the members of this couple has been vaccinated. They felt pretty good about us sitting outside and we had lunch outside on Sunday. It was a really beautiful day. And, uh, they live in Edina, but they're, they're not neighbors, but they're friends we know that have moved to the city and um, of course, they love it here. Um, but, uh, what I wanted to say is that, um, they both work from home now. And in fact, what they've done is they've given up one of their cars. You know? So, um, you know, that, that's something that, uh, there's something that came up on, I'm on the bicycle and pedestrian committee for the, for the Pennington County for our district and, um, you know, this topic has come up where it's like, you know, we're planning and this has to do sort of with TDM. You know, and another transportation planning the city has is that if more people are working from home, you know, is the congestion and demand on, on city streets going to be significantly less and and, and I know it's certainly in the Southdale area where there's a lot of, uh, office buildings and such. But anyway, they are, they, they live just a block off France. And, um, they've given up one of their cars and, and I think they'll be working remotely for for, uh, well, potentially for the rest of their careers and they love it. Um, the second thing is, uh, relating to TDM and because I was on the committee, um, where we talked about that and I didn't know anything about TDM before we started. And, um, it was a really good, uh, group of people and we learned a lot. Um, but one thing I learned about it was that it's really about congestion reduction. And, um, you know, that's an admirable goal, but it's really not necessarily based on environmental or climate change or equity or anything like that. It's really just trying to get people to make it easier for people to drive. So, I mean, it's, uh, the more I learned about it, the, the less enticing it seems. The second thing about it is that, um, I mean, I still think we should go ahead with it, but the second thing about it is that we have to think that, you know, it's a bunch of endpoint requirements, basically, you know, the kinds of things that we're looking at for TDM requirements. And, um, meaning that it's, it's typically structural things you can see, you know, bike sheds, that sort of thing. Um, and these things are all great. But think about if we had, um, and I know I make this point all the time, think about if the city had, you know, amazingly wide sidewalks and everybody walked everywhere. And then cars were invented and, but all we gave for cars were, you know, dirty rutted roads that couldn't go anywhere. And, and that had lots of dead ends and they just randomly ended and and you had these giant trucks on them all the time. You know, it would not be comfortable. It would not be fun. People would continue to walk, right? And we kind of have the opposite problem where, you know, we have these amazing streets and we plow them amazingly like no other city and we maintain them like no other city and, you know, and, and so that encourages people to drive, you know? So when we have these TDM requirements, I think the city can't forget that you need to also have some sort of bicycle network, you know? There needs to be some way that, um, you know, having endpoints, like having a parking garage, but not having a road to get there doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I think it's still incumbent. still incumbent upon the city to to think about, you know, having some sort of bicycle network that's more than just two loops that we have in our country. Anyway, just something to think about in terms of TDM. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. I bet your friends are probably going to be saving a lot of money on insurance and car payments and other things, too.
Yeah, they already are.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, perhaps, maybe Kerry wants to address our next meeting in a couple weeks. It's sort of a departure from our the work session. And I I'm assuming maybe the new commissioners have been aware of what we're doing. But it's a work session in lieu of a planning commission meeting with the city council. I just thought maybe.
Add in in my comment.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
I have just one random parallel to what Commissioner Miranda was saying. And I guess it's a follow up to the TDM. And I hope we see some sort of clarity with it. And it's just the way in which we'll measure the success. So I'm kind of like on the engineering but environmental side of like our rivers and streams, one of the ways to measure quality of the water is to actually actually measure the physical quality of a temperature dissolved oxygen, etc. But what's often not measured is, well, is there actual is the stuff you want to see in the water in there, like phytoplankton, zooplankton, like life, right? So I do, I do worry that if we're just going to measure physical objects or structural things that are there as part of these developments, but they're not utilized, we're missing the actual correct mark to measure. So just food for thought. You know, just if we don't totally understand the policy because it's not in our wheelhouse, but it to your gut, it doesn't feel all right. I think it's worth us discussing and pushing it and questioning it till we get something that we do feel good. Because I I do worry that we're going to implement a policy that you can't measure well, or the standards aren't there to measure effectively. And it'll just be a loss cause. So just something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Other commissioners with comments? Or thoughts about comments received today? Well, I have a few. First of all, several I've received we last a couple of weeks ago, we discussed doing an annual feedback, and several excellent comments have been received. So if anyone else has comments, this is again, you know, I don't know if I can use the word voluntary and volunteer, the words voluntary and volunteer enough. But you are volunteers, and this is voluntary. It's it's just to help us improve what we do. We're, I think Commissioner Bennett last time said it's an experiment, that we never did it before. And we'll see if it helps us. I'm hopeful that once we collect comments, we can discuss them hopefully at our April work session at the back half of April. But again, it's basically one thing, you're like, yeah, you know, I like that. More of that, one thing you think, you know, this would this would help us do better. And one thing you'd like us to do. And and there's no real, other than having it be a one thing, because I, you know, I want to keep people from thinking that, well, I'll really work at this, and I'll give you six, you know, just one is good. It can be a work plan item, it can be a process item, it can be anything you want that you think would be beneficial. Regarding the work plan itself, it can be a work plan item. Even though I'm saying one thing now, we will discuss the work plan later in the year. And at that time, you can have up to infinity ideas, or send them separately between now and then. I mean, there's no limitation on the items to that we can consider on our work plan. And no commissioner is limited to only proposing one item. You know, we're probably only going to get about a half dozen items on the work plan. But anything you think we should be covering, you know, whether it's looking at having some kind of, as Commissioner Barubi said today, some kind of, you know, activity that the staff handles, you know, separately from having to have a full public hearing like we did, or looking at, you know, whether we should look at, you know, should if it's a second story addition on top of a first story addition, should, you know, what are our thoughts about using the same setback that was applicable to the first story building? You know, any or many other ideas that have been shared, we talked about tree ordinance in the past, we've talked about the amount of space dedicated to cars. I know some people may want to take another look at the parking ordinance, which or other things. Regarding the parking ordinance itself, several commissioners have commented on the draft cover memo that Kerry sent out. If you have if you have other comments, send them to Kerry and me. Planner Teague, maybe you can, when it's your opportunity, you can address kind of what you think the the path forward on that item is. And then I had one something a little more lengthy. So it's not half an hour or anything, but you know, just bear with me for a few moments here. At the outset, earlier in the meeting where you discussed the minutes, I said I was going to address the sketch plan review we did a couple of weeks ago for the affordable housing development in the Valley View Wooddale District. So I thought we did a nice job. And I actually, I'm going to give one, you know, one general piece of feedback. I think the whole planning commission has done a really good job over the last year, as I mentioned in our last meeting, adjusting to conducting meetings this way. It's much different. You know, I think we've given good feedback. I think our processes are crisp. And I thought we did a good job in that meeting. That said, I received some negative feedback that we didn't consider the small area plan. We didn't expressly consider the small area plan in that sketch plan review. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. First of all, I don't think that feedback is fair. I mean, I think we did not expressly say the small area plan says X, and I feel okay. But information on the small area plan was included in our packet. And just about every core point within the small area plan was expressly discussed. Things like building height, screening the parking, the small plan recommends underground parking, and that was expressly discussed. It discusses what to do with the how you enter into the district, you know, whether it's the gateway or something to do with the corner. We did discuss all of those things. But we didn't expressly say, well, the small area plan says X, but you know. And so I think we did a fine job. Further, the purpose of a sketch plan review is we've always understood it, is to give our feedback on the project. Is not it is not to say yay or nay, whether this is whether what's being presented will be approved or not be approved. I'm going to come back to that in just a moment. Further, the chapter in the city code relating to site plans, it's Article three of Chapter thirty six of the city code, says what we're supposed to do with it. It's called site plan review. You're supposed to consider the contents of Chapter thirty six, and Planner Teague may follow up on this comment at any moment. Chapter thirty six isn't related to small area plans. Now, that said, Kerry and I have spoken about this. And we're future future memos to us will be more overt, you know, regarding what the small area plan requires, just like they're overt today about what zoning requires. We can look at whether or not it's important to amend the ordinance to say that we're supposed to consider the comp plan, the small area plans, which are outside of Chapter thirty six for me to site plan reviews. But the point being is the small area plan, the comp plan, they do reflect what was considered by the city. And so, you know, perhaps going the extra step and actually, you know, considering it at some level and expressly considering, even though, as I said a moment ago, we did consider all the core points. Further, and perhaps finally, I think, I don't know, Kerry, unless you think I have anything else to add, Kerry and I have discussed that perhaps reviewing the sketch plan process would be a good item to add to our work plan for next year. For years now, I've been hearing feedback, the sketch plan process isn't that good. It doesn't work well. It's not doing exactly what we want. And you know, and part of me thinks, well, that's like capitalism, right? I mean, everyone has complaints about capitalism, but no one's really come up with a system that works better than that. But perhaps there's additional improvements that can be made to the sketch plan process. So that's I'm done with I'm done with that one. I have one more item that's much briefer. But Kerry, did you want to add on or respond to anything I've said there?
Nothing more to add, other than I think that might be a good thing for us to consider for the work plan for next year. Just the whole
Thanks.
How that process works.
Thanks. And before I go to the next item, then I want to ask if anyone in the commission has any feedback to this, one way or the other, or questions, or if you do, you bring it up later. Commissioner Miranda, hi, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought Commissioner Barubi was. So, yeah, in terms of the sketch plan, I think being, you know, relatively new to the commission myself, I remember how difficult it was when you first started being overwhelmed with all this information. So having something like that, I think, would really help especially our new members. You know, because I feel comfortable with sketch plan process, but I certainly remember being new here and completely overwhelming. So so I think that's a that's a good thing. And then in terms of the small area plan, I agree, we did, you know, talk about that. And I specifically remember mentioning the 30 feet versus two and two story versus three story thing. But I guess, you know, I don't know if it should be indoctrinated, but I suppose we probably should speak to as commissioners, we probably should speak to these items specifically when we bring them up. I mean, that'd be easy enough to do. So, thanks.
Miranda, Commissioner Barubi?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Chair, that I appreciate hearing that feedback. I I think it's really important for us to hear what the public is thinking. And usually, I would assume that most of the feedback is provided through the comments, and that we would all see those comments. So thank you for sharing that. And I guess I would encourage you to continue to do that as you get feedback, positive or negative, because we can we can learn from it. And, you know, I think it's helpful. So I guess it never occurred to me that there was feedback that we didn't all see. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Kerry, did you have further on that one? I had one more item.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, and I can emphasize that more in my introduction to the city plans, and encourage the commission to talk about the small area plans.
So my next item and my final comment tonight segues wonderfully from Commissioner Barubi's last comment. Recently, the public feedback process for the planning commission was changed. MJ Layman, the city staff, came and told us about the changes, and they saw it pretty good. And so now we're getting a report from Better Together about who has commented as of noon on Friday. But I understand the city's received positive and negative feedback about these are Better Together, and so things changed. And so we weren't getting any feedback received after Friday, the day the packet goes out, we weren't getting. And I think they're going to be reinstituting a process. So we do get the feedback that's received after Friday. I don't know what they're going to do on Better Together. Right now, they're closing comments before the packets come out. I've encouraged the city staff that with public comments, there are two true norths. One is find a way to get as many comments as you can. There's always there's nothing's going to be perfect. There's not be any process. But the more comments we can get, the better. That's one true north. And the second true north that I've encouraged is the more comments you can get to us, the more helpful that'll be to us to do our to do a good job. So I'm not in favor of closing comments early, not allowing public to comment. And I'm not in favor of not sharing the comments with us. I mean, what's been what the what the plan was, I guess, was anything received after the Friday before our meeting would then go to the city council. But, you know, those are my two true norths. I think that's going to start happening now. I don't know what's going to happen with Better Together. But I think there's going to be another way. Maybe it'll be the old way where everything's just on the email and the voicemail. But at least we'll get more comments. And with that, that concludes mine. I don't know if anyone else had anything. I like if you, you know, I like to offer just one final round of the Going going gone. I'm going to turn over to Planner Teague. Can you respond to that? Jerry's question about training, and anything else? Welcome, Kerry.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So just update you on city council actions on projects where you have recommended. There's just been one since our last meeting. That was the Shepherd of the Hills Church. The city council held the public hearing at their last meeting, and they will take action on it next at their meeting next week. In regard to the next planning commission meeting, as Commissioner Strauss indicated, we've canceled the regular meeting for March 24. But we have scheduled a work session with the or a joint work training session with the city council. It will be done virtually. The city has hired John Shardlow of Stan Tech. He's a well known planning consultant. He's done a lot of training like this with other cities across the Twin Cities. He does it for ULI as well. So that will be a two hour virtual meeting, and he will make a presentation and educate us on land use law, role of a planning commission, and the two main topics. So look for an invite probably in the next couple of weeks to that meeting. To follow up on the question about the parking ordinance, our goal here is to get it posted on the website, if not this week, by Monday of next week, to get everything posted. And we're we would schedule a public hearing for April 28. And then once these planning commission makes a final recommendation on the ordinance, we would then schedule the the city council public hearing. So that's the plan in that regard, to try to get that put together this week and then posted no later than, say, Monday of next week. That's all my comments.
Anyone else? Anything further?
Yeah, I got I got something quick.
Commissioner Bennett?
But big, again, another big welcome and huge thanks to the two new commissioners tonight, and thanks for participating. That's rare on the first night. But yeah, just welcome and appreciate you guys being on the team.
Anyone else? That takes us to the adjournment. I would like to invite Commissioner Alkire to move for the adjournment. I'm just going alphabetically here. And Commissioner Bartling to second it, and then we'll do the motion, if you'd like.
Sure, Chair, there's a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Ms. Olson, could you do the roll vote, please?
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Chair Namarav?
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Good night.